I'd like to call to order this meeting of the PBD City Council. Please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Approval of records.
No record this evening, we'll can hold off on that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This meeting is being televised live by Cable Channel 9 and is being taped by PBD Access TV and is also being recorded by our City Council stenographer. Item, item for A, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice as hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct the public hearing on Thursday evening, November 17, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wiggin Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., on the application from Alex Auto Sales, 480 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., requesting to amend a Class II motor vehicle license by seeking to increase the number of motor vehicles offered for sale from 15 to 35. PBD City Council Councillor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Is the applicant here? If you could please step forward and state your aim and address for the record.
Alex Idangian.
And your address, please?
480 Lowell Street.
If you could just tell us what you'd like to do.
We would, initially, we have a lot for a size of 15 cars and we'd like to increase that to 35, but we came to the agreement that we would be allowed to increase it to 25 vehicles.
Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Sir, you're standing up there as well. Could you also state your name and tell us why you're?
Anthony Idangian.
And are you a partner?
I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you. Just to put a face on this property, this is the Sunoco gas station across the street from the high school adjacent to Lomart Shopping Plaza. I went out and I met with the owners. I did do a site visit and, you know, this is a very visible piece of property in the City of PBD. And the first thing, I didn't think I thanked you when I came down, is I do want to thank you for the flowers and the garden that you grow. You'd be surprised if the people who noticed that and appreciate that. And I didn't mention that, but I was thinking about what you're doing. I did want to, you know, bring that up to you because, quite frankly, it is a visible piece of property, though everyone goes to the high school and you have a temple and a shopping plaza. So I appreciate the way you keep that lot looking good and I hope to continue to see you do that. And growing the vegetables, like I said, that's really nice to watch as the season goes on. They have a current license for 15 cars. They are an active gas station that does repairs with also a license to do car inspection. So there is some traffic going in and out of there. So after we did the site visit, we came to an agreement that I'm comfortable with 25. I think that's the appropriate number. To give you a point of reference, too, is I also did a little bit of quick research and on Lake Lowell Street, next to 7-Eleven is RNA Automotive. That is a 20-car license. So I was trying to maybe give a reference point to help everybody, but I felt, as I said, 25 I'm comfortable with. The one condition on the special permit that I'm going to ask them to make is that no uninsured or unregistered cars will be parked at 474 Lowell Street, which is Lomart Shopping Center. You have to have all your unregistered and insured cars for sale on your property. If you have an agreement with them next door that you can park service cars or your own employee cars, that's fine, but we want to keep all of the cars that are for sale and that are uninsured, unregistered on your property. If you violate that special permit, that special condition, that could then jeopardize your special permit for used car license. We discussed that. I think you're comfortable with that, but I just need to let the council know about that. But other than that, I'll be supporting the license for the increase from 15 to 25 with that one special permit condition, special condition on the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sasslaw. Counselor Charis.
Thank you, Chairman. I got to tell you, months in the past, I've gone by this location and I understand it's in your ward and my ward is across the street from it. And I've been having some people concerned with the amount of cars that has been there. You've been licensed for 15, but I certainly know you had many, many more cars there on the lot in the past, I wouldn't say in the past couple of months, because you certainly cleared those out, but prior to that, say four to five months ago, you certainly had more than 15 cars there.
Yes.
Right? And you certainly had them on the other piece of property that Mr. Sasslaw had talked about on the other side of the fence with Lomart. And this was, you were kind of skirting around your license number. And I had people complaining to me about how many cars there was on that lot. So I certainly will follow the recommendation from the council of how many cars he feels you should be having. But I got to tell you, you know, if you're licensed to a certain amount of vehicles, it's not fair to everyone else who obeys the rules and law and licenses and you don't. So please really understand that I'm going to be watching because the neighbors across the street, who is in my ward, certainly notice how many cars are packed in there. And I do believe, Ms. Manning, I certainly hope I don't take her time here, but we have an ordinance that you need to keep the number of licensed vehicles that you have to sell in the window visible. You aware of this?
Yes.
Ordinance?
Yes.
I don't believe you have that now, correct?
We do have it.
You have it posted?
It's not on the window, but it's right on the wall.
It's on the wall inside?
Inside.
And can people see it from the street?
Yes.
They can?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to go on record as that. I know in the past you had well over the licensed cars that you should be having.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Charis. Other councilors. Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Sasslaw. Just curious as to when you had your discussions with the applicant and looking at the map, did you determine what spaces were going to be eliminated? Did you think they were going to be set up a different way that was more advantageous to the neighborhood?
What I did is, you know, walking the property, basically, we identified, it's difficult to, we did not come down on a finite, like this space is for a car for sale, this space is for employee, this space is for a repair. What I did is I walked, I was there two or three times, and we identified what we felt in agreement was the 25 spots. Basically, if you're coming east, if you're coming from West PBD towards the property, there are three spaces that they go, I'll say, the long way. As you pull into the lot, there's 10 that you can fit comfortably, there's those three, then there's the 12 that basically abut the Lomart Shopping Center Plaza. So we, I have pointed that out to him about, I think that's the best setup for visibility for his own use to sell the cars and, but I didn't get specific as far as painting lines and identifying which one, but that's how I came up with the 25.
Thank you. I didn't expect you to be that specific. I guess what, I was more curious where the service cars go and where the cars for sale went and whether that was why you determined that an area should be set aside for one. That was what the purpose of my question, but it's not a big deal. Thank you.
Other councilors. Counselor Mitsoulas.
Yeah. So there's room enough for the expansion that you're allowing them, am I correct, Joe? It's quite obvious, okay. My only comment was, I like the comment you started out with, and I hope for people that are listening that have used car lots, I like what you said, that they planted flowers out there and, you know, that's what I always talk about. I've talked about that twice, about Tremont Auto Sales. People should drive by Tremont Auto Sales and see what a car lot looks like. There's flowers out there during the summertime. They even have vegetables out there. You could, you know, they have cucumbers. I mean, they have all kinds of vegetables out there. It's really quite attractive and I like, I like what you were saying. And maybe other car dealers out there will start looking at this gentleman's lot, the way you're describing it in Tremont Auto Sales, and the car lots will start looking a little more presentable than just used car lots. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitsoulas. Other councilors. Counselor Sasslaw.
So just for a point of clarification on Counselor Charis' question, I think you have a little bit of confusion. Your sticker, I went into the, I went into your office, your customer waiting room, we'll say, and what I did notice is that all of your certificates, including your used car license, it's posted up top above the bay where you could not change it or move it or if someone came in to see it, I know that. But that being said, to Counselor Charis' point, you need to move it to the window. You can keep all your licenses above the door going into your service bays, but you do need to put it on the window. So if you want to have it twice, that's fine, but that is for people who drive in, for city officials who need to see that. So you have to have that on the window, just so you know, okay?
All right.
Be clear about that. You can keep it up top above the bay, but you can also have that one right on the window when people walk in, if the police drive by, if they're doing a count, they can have it. I don't think you could ever get up there and change it and move it, but just for the sake of being, you know, within the law and the ordinance that we passed about displaying it, if you could do that, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Sasslaw. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you. On that matter, I've been looking at other used car lots to see if the spirit of that ordinance is being fulfilled. And in fairness to these gentlemen and other people, there are so many that don't have it displayed in the manner that they're supposed to, that I think that, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that the city really hasn't gotten that word out to everyone in the manner that it is being understood and absorbed. So I think we need to really try to get that out there to folks, that it's actually very simple, as you've explained. It's supposed to be displayed in the window facing the street, easily seen by all, not, you know, not just the police, but just regular citizens going by so that, you know, it can be easily policed. But at this point, we've changed it over a year ago and I just don't see it being followed. So I'm going to say that it's probably on us that we need to get that out there. So if we could take some action to that effect, Tim, maybe the beginning of the year, we can try again to educate the used car lot owners. Thank you.
Counselor Garabedian.
Yeah, thank you. I just, on Counselor Manning's point, is maybe, do you generate a letter, let's say at the beginning of the year when they renew their licenses, that that's where it should go?
Well, we had done that last year, Counselor. We had mailed out the license laminated. It clearly says, you know, please display in the front window visible to the public with a cover letter. So at this point in time, we'll just send Detective Crane out and just make a spot check of everybody, just to make sure that they're, that they're all doing it correctly.
So when you get your new licenses, you can put it right on the window now?
Sure.
Right on the front. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors Manning-Martin and Counselor Garabedian. Other councilors. Counselor Sasslaw.
And I'll just, I'll just throw this out. When we had the discussion last year, I talked about it, but I still, I still think it's valuable. I would love to see those certificates on, whether it be a golden rod or whether it be a blue piece of paper. I just think the problem is having on a white piece of paper, he has, he has a bulletin board of many different licenses, and I looked at it, but they're all white. I would love to see us a blue, a golden rod, just something that identifies that we know that's, that's the car license. So I'm going to just throw it out there. I'm going to let the clerk do what he would like to do with it, but I just think putting on a white, eight and a half by a white piece of paper, we're not, we're not helping. So I'm going to suggest that you might want to look at that, Tim, and maybe put on a colored piece of paper. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Sasslaw.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Alex Auto Sales, 480 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., requesting to amend a Class II motor vehicle license by seeking to increase the number of motor vehicles offered from sale, for sale from 15 to 25 vehicles. And one condition of the special permit is that there will be, all unregistered and uninsured vehicles will be located at 480 Lowell Street and no vehicles that are unregistered and uninsured will be stored on 474 Lowell Street. If that is the case, that would be a violation of this special permit and they'd be asked to come before the council. So move.
Counselor, I just had a suggestion whispered to me about maybe broadening that to say adjacent properties, so that, on adjacent properties, would that be, would that be agreeable?
That'd be agreeable, absolutely.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Reports to committees. Counselor Gravel is not here this evening. Stepping in for Counselor Gravel is Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met Tuesday night, November 15. Members present were Mr. Gravel, myself, and Counselor Walsh. Counselor Charis served for Counselor Gould and Counselor Turco served for Counselor Sasslaw. There were two agenda items discussed. The transfer of $140,000 to establish a budget for Tilly's Farm. The other was a transfer of funds in the amount of $291,100 for the newly created Building Department. Appearing to speak on both items was Mr. Gingras of the Director of Finance and Administration. Ms. Jen Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation, also appeared to speak on the Tilly's Farm transfer. The first motion passed unanimously, which was to approve the following transfer of funds to establish a budget for Tilly's Farm as submitted by his honor of the mayor under the date of November 2, 2016. And that was to transfer the funds of $140,000 from Budget Reserve to Tilly's Farm salaries in the amount of part-time wages of $17,000, health insurance for $11,000, electric for $1,500, heating for $11,000, water for $800, building repairs and maintenance for $16,000, advertising for $500, outside services for $5,000, telephone for $1,200, gasoline for $500, office supplies for $1,000, standing supplies and products for $30,000, material and supplies for $3,500, and office equipment for $4,500, again, amounting to $140,000. And that motion passed five to zero. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you. Second motion was to move to approve the following transfer of funds to establish a budget for Tilly's Farm as submitted by his honor of the mayor on November 2, and that would be a move from Budget Reserve in the amount of $11,700 to salaries recreation for $11,700. That motion carried five to nothing. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you. And it should be noted on the second motion that was approved in committee is as follows relative to the establishment of the Building Department. Note that the committee did remove the travel allowance line item in that it could not be fully explained as to the reason of said request. The next motion would be to approve, as amended, the transfer of funds submitted by his honor of the mayor under the date of November 1, 2016, striking the travel allowance line item and reducing the requested amount from, the requested amount by $6,750. And the motion is, bear with me, as follows. Budget reserves, 11,000, you know what? In the amount of, transfer of funds in the amount of $284,350 from Budget Reserves to the Building Department categories as submitted in the amount of $284,350,000. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call. I'm sorry, we have his honor of the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, sorry, I wasn't here Tuesday. I actually thought originally the meeting was scheduled for Thursday. I think, as many of you know, I was in Disney with the kids. I got back late Tuesday night and got word about the meeting. Certainly, I wanted to be here if there were any questions about Tilly's or about the request for the Building Department expenditure. I understand there were some questions regarding the travel allowance. I'd be happy to speak to that or answer any questions. I just didn't know if it was proper at this time or if that was going to be put into committee for further discussion. I didn't want to violate any, any of the rules of the council, but I certainly would be happy to explain that request and give some further information on that if the council wishes.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you coming this evening and I hope you enjoyed your vacation. I'm sure it was fun. But I think we did refer it to Subcommittee because it had generated further questions because it was something that we had not seen before. So I think if we, if we kick it around in Subcommittee and then have you join us, because I think we'll have more questions about it, so I think it's deserving of a fuller discussion and a better education on that subject throughout probably the entire budget because it probably shows up a lot and I think we just kind of discovered it.
Great. I'd be happy to do that. And in the meantime, in preparation of the meeting, I can get additional information to you, do a survey of other cities and towns and how they, in terms of how they treat gas and travel allowance and maybe, maybe give some information and shed some light on, on, on some of those questions.
That's great. And if, if it is used in other departments throughout the city than, as opposed to just the building?
Yeah, there are a couple of other positions.
Yeah, that would be great. If you could just identify it to us and give us an education on it, I think that would be very helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. I just want to take a step back. I know we just approved the budget for Tilly's. So my concern is, I don't know what the long-term plan is for Tilly's and I get concerned when we start adding payroll and salaries and health insurance and benefits and all this stuff. So I don't, you know, I approved it now, but I don't want to see this thing explode where we're adding five, 10 employees. I don't know what the plan is down the road, so I, I didn't even know that we were going to be taking on the employees. So that was kind of new to me. But, so can you, do you know what the
Sure.
long-term plan is and what we can expect?
Sure, absolutely. It's a good question. So I could speak to that. We are taking ownership of the farm. I'm sure some of this was discussed on Tuesday evening, but we're taking ownership of the farm on February 1. Mr. Spur exercised a right under his contract to have it given to the city on February 1, provided there's some repairs and some work that he has to do before the property is turned over to us. Very excited about the opportunities for the City of PBD and Tilly's Farm, making that a part of our city. We've been very fortunate in our city to have Brooksbury Farm. It's 250-plus acres to provide for the City of PBD and we think we can make a continuation of that at Tilly's Farm and really foster a partnership between the two in kind of work and a symbiotic relationship to really extend and expand what we do at both those farms now. What was real important to us was to kind of maintain the continuity of Tilly's Farm. It's been an important part of South PBD. It's really been an important part of the, of the City of PBD for generations. And I know people go there for food, for flowers, for poinsettias, and it's been, as I said, an important part of the city. So what's important for us, I think it's going to be a gradual process in terms of implementing a full plan, a long-range plan. What was important to us in the very short term was to maintain the operation of the farm stand. That is a very well-utilized farm stand, very well-attended farm stand, and we wanted to continue to maintain and keep that operation stable. We also believe that we can make additional funds or obtain additional money by bringing Brooksbury products over to sell at Tilly's Farm. And again, I think that's where the symbiotic relationship could come in. To answer your question specifically, Counselor, I believe that initially we are going to hire two full-time employees. Potentially, a third could be hired in the future, but I think the large majority of the employees will be part-time people who work at the farm stand that wouldn't be benefited in any way. That's kind of how the farm operates now. Tilly's kind of operates where they have, Mr. Spur runs it. There's a gentleman there who works full-time, runs the farm stand. And they have a number of different employees that work part-time hours working at the farm stand. So I think that a lot of the operation will continue as is, and I envision in terms of full-time employees, two, maybe at some point there would be a third. And then we'll see how things go as to additions or subtractions we want to make as we determine the best way to operate the farm. I think it's going to be, we have some expertise, which is great, operating Brooksbury Farm, but every farm is different and there'll be some things we have to learn about Tilly's and its operation. And, but it's important, I think, to keep the stability of the farm initially in terms of the farm stand operation and then to work in the future on some of the things we're real excited about, that we've been working on for a number of months now in preparation, potentially doing a partnership with the North Shore Tech School, allowing opportunities for cooking classes, healthy foods, community gardens, all the things that we're exploring, I think will have to be determined over the course of the next few months, even a couple of years. So it's kind of a long-winded answer, but that's kind of how I see it initially.
Just to follow up, just one more question. So is the law, is the plan to make this similar, like to an enterprise zone, so the revenue and the income make it self-sustaining to pay for those employees, similar to the golf course where we take in revenue to pay? Or is, I mean, is there, I don't know how much revenue there will be, but I don't know if that's just going to go, I don't know what's the business plan.
Yep.
Is it coming back just to the city or is it going to stay in there?
Yep. Right now, the only two enterprise funds we have is the golf course and the ice skating rink. Brooksbury Farm operates as part of the city budget. I anticipate that Tilly's Farm will operate the same way, but we do have the ability, if it's the appropriate thing to do, to create an enterprise fund. I do believe that over the course of time, and I think it will be in a very short time, that Tilly's Farm will be profitable for the city. I think it's a wonderful operation that we can make some tweaks, add some, add some to it with the partnership with Brooksbury Farm. But I think a lot of the vendors, a lot of the food and product we bring in from others will continue. Again, I want to maintain the stability and I think, you know, there'll be some opportunity to review, you know, every few months to see how the operation is going, but I think at this point, we wouldn't be moving forward with a request for an enterprise fund creation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Sinowitz. We have a motion on the floor. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Gravel. I'm sorry. Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould. I'm sorry, Garabedian, Gould, McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Counsel Martin. All set, Counselor Manning-Martin? Thank you. Municipal safety, Counselor Garabedian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Municipal safety met on Tuesday, November 15th. Present were Counselor Charis, Counselor Sasla, Counselor Turco, and Counselor Sinowitsch, filled in for Counselor Gould. The committee met to discuss four agenda items. First one was pole-mounted electronic speed signs. The second was review intersections Summit Street, North, onto Centennial Drive. And third was discussion regarding proposed Zero Burr Street subdivision. Chief Thomas Griffin and Captain Scott Richards appeared to answer questions regarding the pole-mounted electronic speed signs and the intersection of Summit Street and Centennial Drive. The following motions, which had been previously approved at a previous municipal safety committee meeting, came out of those discussions. One was move to request that Captain Richards and/or Chief Griffin investigate the purchase of six to 12 pole-mounted electronic speed signs and report their findings to the city So moved on that one.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
The other motion was to request that Public Services Department paint a stop line on Centennial Drive for drivers taking a left onto Summit Street. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
And then the request that the Police Department investigate for the possibility of extending the traffic island on Centennial Drive further out towards Summit Street. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
Thank you. Last item discussed was the proposed subdivision at Zero Burr Street. The purpose of the meeting was to frame issues as the development goes forward. Several neighbors from the Burr Street area appeared to voice their concerns over the proposed development of 23-house lots. Appearing to speak on behalf of the city were Lieutenant Chris Dowling, Fire Prevention Officer, Albert Tellerico, Building Commissioner, and Chief Thomas Griffin, and Captain Scott Richards from the Police Department. Mr. David Terenzoni, interim Director of Public Services Department. Several concerns were raised by residents, counselors, and department heads, including truck access on Burr Street and area roadway. Counselors and department heads, including truck access on Burr Street, I'm sorry, proposed that all truck access the site from an existing access point off Boston Street and Middleton. Hours of operation, buffer zones, blasting, rock-crushing, drainage, environmental concerns, dust control, road and control, street sweeping, sidewalks on Burr Street, impact to wildlife, developer posting a bond, developing a truck route, approved by Mass DOT, and possibly posting closed-circuit TV cameras at entrances to the subdivisions. After a lengthy discussion, the following motion was approved. Counselor Sinowitsch moved to request that the mayor meet with the developer, Mr. Crouppie and Attorney Vonzalitis, to discuss the potential access point to the Zero Burr Street property from the Middleton-Bostick side. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
And also, Counselor Sinowitsch gave me a late communication from Suzanne V. Slater, President of the PTO Burr School, stating their concerns about safety from the trucks going down Burr Street and obviously the safety for the children. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to receive that late?
Motion to receive.
So we have, under suspension of the rules, motion to receive the late communication and refer to public safety, right? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Garabedian. Counselors, we're going to move to item 7C. And his honor, the mayor is here. Should anybody have any questions with respect to these appointments? Do I have a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Counselor Gould has a motion to receive. All in favor? Under suspension of the rules, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Acting under provisions of power vested in the mayor, I'd like to move for approval the following names submitted by the mayor. Would you like me to read them all, Tim? Yes. Mr. Christopher Morpheus, City Collector, one-year term. Ms. Emily Chin, MD, City Physician, one-year term. Ms. Connavalli, City Treasurer, one-year term. Ms. Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation, one-year term. David Terenzoni, Director of Public Services, a three-year term. Finishes the unexpired term, that completes the unexpired term of Mr. Langley. Steve Pazin, Emergency Management Director, a one-year term. Joanne Roden, Brooksbury Farm Director, a one-year term. Andrew Metropolis, Historic Commission, three-year term. Judy Otto, Historic Commission, three-year term. Lola Buster, Historical Commissioner, three-year term. David Cronin, Historical Commissioner, alternate member, one-year term. Mr. Vincent Reponey, Historical Commissioner, one-year term. Ms. O'Donnell, Human Resource Director, a one-year term. Mr. Shaw, Local Building Inspector, a one-year term. Ms. Maureen Salmon, Outdoor Education Coordinator, a one-year term. Mr. Daniel Collins, Park Commission, five-year term. Mr. Ronald Sheehan, Park Commission, five-year term. Mr. Dan Doucette, Purchasing Commission, one-year term. And Mr. Kelly, Kevin Kelly, Assistant Director of Public Services, a one-year term. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. On the motion, Counselor Manning-Martin.
Yes, through you to the mayor, if I could. Mr. Mayor, the, under Chief Pazin's Emergency Management Director, is that the Homeland Security stipend piece that used to be under the Veterans Agent?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, because that's where it belongs, either in police and fire.
I agree.
So I appreciate that you're making that adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. Counselor Sinowitsch.
Through you to the mayor. I just had a question, Mayor. We're appointing Dave Terenzoni, the Director of Public Services, for three years, and then we got Kevin Kelly as one year. Is that an ordinance thing, or is it, why isn't he coincide with?
Yeah, there's a few different ordinance positions that are three-year terms. Finance, Auditor, and Department of Public Works. I put forward a three-year term, however, his term would expire at the end of next year, which would be the unfulfilled term of Bob Langley and then Joe Fode for that short period of time. So I thought that was appropriate. But those three, and I believe Community Development is also a three-year appointment.
Thank you, Counselor Sinowitsch. Counselor Walsh. All set. Other counselors? I'm seeing, Mr. Mayor, just one clarification. So with Mr. Terenzoni, the acting, this eliminates the acting?
Yes. For both he and Kevin Kelly, yes.
Thank you. Counselors, you heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
Yes.
Sinowitsch.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries. Tentum.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Mazzulis.
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mazzulis. Counselor Sinowitsch.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first motion is to the Building Inspector's office. I have a resident at the end of Herald Road, at number 21, at the corner, intersects Symphony Road, who's taken all of his leaves and just blown them into the street. He has no desire to rake them and put them in bags. They're all over the street, and I think it's a, and the people all around him start to resent him. Now, everybody's blowing their leaves in the street, and it looks like a forest in the middle of the road. So I'd like to make a motion that the Building Inspector go out to 21 Herald, talk to that resident, and tell him that he cannot blow his leaves into the street, and to look at some of the few houses there on Symphony, if anybody else is doing the same thing, to address those homes also. I think it's better that he goes out, somebody goes out in person and explains to them they can't do it rather than send them a letter, because I think we did it last year and it didn't work. So I've been getting some complaints. So moved.
Counselors heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Sinowitsch.
Okay. Secondly, this is also a motion to the Building Inspector's office. I guess, Tim, actually, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item, it's the one about the permits, Tim. Where is that? I'm sorry. Oh, this doesn't have an item. Is this a late communication? This is basically, so there's a resident at 720 Lowell Street, and you're only allowed, I found out last meeting, that you're allowed?
Counselor, if you could just, we'll just have a motion to receive the late communication. I don't think?
Oh, I'm sorry. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive a late communication from the city clerk. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Counselor Sinowitsch.
So you're allowed two yard sale permits for year, per year. This person had four, so there must have been an oversight, and then he probably had another 10 or 12, and it turned into a permanent business where he's, so we've had numerous complaints, and the Buildings Inspector really wasn't sure if he had any bite to go out there. So I'd like to make a motion that the Building Inspector go out there and tell the person he's not allowed to have any more yard sales. I guess he can re-up, you know, when the New Year turns, he gets two more, but if he continues it, then I think we have to look at some sort of a fine. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Sinowitsch.
And the last is a, I'm going to just touch on Burr Street. I want to thank the councils that were here and all the department heads that came out. And all that big laundry list that Mike spoke about is all to frame an order of conditions so we can protect that neighborhood over the term of this long-term project. And I hope when that motion that came out of that, that I want to sit down opposite the building with the mayor and his attorneys and see if we can get some agreement that works for everybody. All right? So having said that, the other question I had, there's something in here, and I'm not going to receive it, but there was something in here about the marijuana laws, or maybe I will receive it. I'm sorry.
It's item, yeah, item 7B, Counselor.
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B. Here it is. I'm sorry.
Counselor, we'll receive that, but we're going to have to refer it someplace, so if you could, we, there was some, I've discussed it with, I've discussed, it's kind of a two-pronged request from the mayor, and I've discussed it with the chairs of both legal and industrial and community development, and the consensus seemed to be that it belonged with industrial and community development. So please take that into consideration within your motion.
Move to receive in place into industrial and community development?
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And I just had one comment. We're going through the process of adding liquor licenses, a home rule petition, and maybe Counsel Walsh at the time can look into this, but I thought I read an article that the number of marijuana stores is in direct proportion to the number of liquor licenses you have. So I want to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot in adding more and more, so hopefully we have a balance, and maybe they won't apply to home rule petition, you know, those licenses as only our base licenses. So that's something, I'd hate to see us put in more licenses and get more marijuana clinics, but that's just a thought. So, and I think that's it, Mr. President. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sinowitsch. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, it's more of a comment than motions, and I'd just like to recognize that since our last meeting, I believe, we've had two of our colleagues who have been the recipients of awards from outside organizations. One was Counselor Gould, who was recognized by the Bridgewell Organization for his visionary leadership, and I'd just like to offer congratulations to you on that. And then last night, last night, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce recognized Counselor Gravel and his wife Kathy for their distinguished leadership and the work they do in the community as well. So I just thought it was nice that two of our colleagues are recognized by outside organizations for all the work they do above and beyond the city council. So congratulations to both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, for the kind words for our colleagues. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the same lines as was just briefly mentioned by Counselor Sinowitsch, I wanted to discuss the recreational marijuana use, which just passed, or question number four. And I know that the mayor submitted 7B, and that was to address the medicinal marijuana that we haven't tackled yet, and now we have, coming down the pike, recreational marijuana use. But the December 15th is when the recreational marijuana use possession portion of the law comes into effect, but the actual licenses of selling recreational marijuana doesn't kick in until 2018. And the city of Peabody, although collectively the city of Peabody voted against question four, the measure, it passed, so it is what it is. So it's becoming the law of the land. So we do, as a city, need to get in front of and plan for the implementation of this so we can determine as a city the locations, the hours, the signage, and the taxes that are imposed on the sale of recreational marijuana. And as Counselor Sinowitsch alluded to, we are required by this law to have up to 20% of the, 20% of pot shops or even growing facilities of our current liquor and beer licenses. So I don't know what our actual number is, and I know that we're increasing that, but we do have, we are required by the new law to have 20% of our liquor and wine licenses. So what we can do in this law, though, is limit that number by voter approval, to do so by enacting a local ballot question. So we do have a lot of authority and power to plan what we want to do and how we want to roll this out, and we have plenty of time to do it. So I suggest that we get, again, be prepared, get out front, and refer this matter to, I know the medicinal marijuana, you decided it would go to industrial and community development. However, I think there are legal terms here. If we do want to discuss a ballot initiative, that that would probably fall under legal as well. So I would think we should start with legal and maybe industrial and community development be invited as well. So I'd like to refer that motion to discuss how we will implement recreational marijuana use to legal affairs in order to discuss what I had just described. So moved.
So we're kind of, just so I understand, Counselor Manning-Martin, we've already referred both matters to industrial, so we want to bifurcate that, basically, because there are?
I wasn't aware that we referred the 7A from the mayor was on, was it 7A?
Counselor Sinowitsch made a motion to refer.
7B? That was medicinal. That was medicinal marijuana issue, which has been lingering.
Right. It's only one communication, and both those matters are contemplated in that communication. So that was why I had discussed it with both chairs, and we were trying to determine where it made sense to start.
Where does it say?
By may, Counselor, if you see, almost the end of the paragraph, it said, "Second is the realization that the ordinance change will provide a format to manage potential retail use."
Okay. I'd still like to refer the separate matter to legal to discuss whether we want a ballot initiative, because that's not covered in this request here. And I'd like to keep it separate, because it's completely separate. It's a mandate by the voters, and it's completely separate from medicinal, which has been, when did that pass? That's well over a year old, and we're just discussing it now. So how long, how old is medicinal?
It's a couple of years old.
It's a couple of years old. So I'd rather keep them separate and distinct and not get tied one down with the other and address the recreational in legal affairs. Thank you.
I most certainly, thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin, and I most certainly understand the requests, and we were grappling with that same exact question. Just procedurally, we've already sent it one place. So Counselor Sinowitsch, you have no objection to essentially altering that earlier motion?
No problem at all. I think Counselor Manning has a good point. Some of these issues are going to have to be separated in terms of the legal part, and we're not even getting into the edibles part and how this, that's going to work. I didn't even, you know, there's a lot to talk about, but that is a, she has a good point on that. I would support putting that part into legal affairs.
Okay. So if you wouldn't mind?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may, why don't you just keep his motion? And then recreational marijuana is in legal affairs so that we can discuss those issues. And it's a motion, and I'd like to just move on with the motion.
Okay, so, independent of the communication from the mayor, you're referring the topic to, okay, that makes perfect sense. Thank you for that clarification. Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Manning-Martin.
Thank you very much. And lastly, we did receive our annual 2015 police report last month, and I would like to make a motion to have the police chief present this report to public, the Committee on Public Safety as soon as possible. Mr. Garabedian, thank you.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Manning-Martin.
Thank you very much. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Charis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the, at the corner of Irving and Martha Terrace, the potholes to be filled in and repaired. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? The vote. Councilor Charis.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a co-motion with Councilor Gould, on the pathway from Irving to King Street, to have the electric light address the light pole, light on that pathway, and the DPS to go into, now that the leaves have come off the trees, to trim down the branches and the trees to make it more accessible for walking through. And also, with DPS, and again, Councilor Gould had a, some information on this that was brought to him also, of having a crosswalk painted from the entrance of the path across the street, across King Street to the sidewalk for the kids. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Charis.
Again, I just publicly like to thank Councilor Gould to bring that to my attention also. It was good to combine them. And again, just to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilor Charis. Council Saslaw.
No orders or resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Saslaw. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you remember, several months ago, we discussed hours of operation for construction, and since it's been a hot issue with Councilor Sinowicz right now, at the planning board tonight, they did say they do not address construction hours of operation, that that's strictly addressed by the Building Inspector. And the Building Inspector says that it's not in our ordinance as far as Sunday hours. And I know we did discuss it a few months back, but I would like to refer this to industrial and community development, I believe. To maybe better word, I know that Council Walsh had issue with homeowners doing work on Sunday, or no issue with homeowners working on Sunday, and I agree with him. But I think maybe for these larger projects, if we could word it properly, that we could get it in our ordinance, and we had a set hour of operation for new construction projects so that this doesn't come up individually on each and every one.
Counselor, on that motion, because this came up at municipal, at the subcommittee meeting, and I'm going to ask for the help of one of the other councilors that was there, there was some reference to a mass general law that deals with this as well, which was information that I, does anybody else remember that? I thought we heard that from the Building Commissioner. Okay, well, yes. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, yes. That was actually brought in by George Smith, a resident from Ward 1. And I asked the Building Commissioner about that, and he said that it did not pertain to his office or this city. He said that there were so many different sets of times set forth depending on whether it's a public project, private project. He didn't actually know which one that was that George had. But that being said, I think that maybe it should be addressed on the local level in our own ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your help with that, Counselor Turco, and the clarification, Counselor Saslaw. Thank you. Councilors, you heard the motion, on motion, Councilor Sinowicz.
I agree with, 100% with Counselor Turco saying, because there seems to be misinformation everywhere, and I guess at the end of the day, does the planning board have the power, which I think they do under the order of conditions, to supersede that and say, if the state code is seven or six, Monday through Friday, and under order of conditions, we can say, okay, it's going to be, you know, seven or four, eight to, you know, whatever. And I believe they do. So, I'd like some clarification, and I would, I would definitely would want that. Because I don't want to be tied, hands tied. Everybody says, no, you can't this, you can't that, and then, so what's the law?
Thank you, Councilor Sinowicz. Councilor Turco.
Mr. President, through you to Councilor Sinowicz, so, and Council Saslaw could help me with this, because he was the other counsel that was there with me tonight. The planning board said they do not at all address construction hours. They only address land, land development, was it?
Site plan, site plan.
Councilor Sinowicz.
And that's, when I went to the first planning board meeting on the Burr Street subdivision, so I sat there and I listened, and what I heard was, hey, you got a 20,000 square foot lot, great. You got 125-foot frontage, great. You're going to have underground utilities, great. But none of the impacts that go on to surrounding residents and all those issues, rock crushing wasn't even addressed. So, there has to be, so they look at it as, is it legal? Okay, they got everything, it's our one zone, the zoning's right. So then, you know, where do you go from there? And that's where, I guess, construction review comes in, that all the department heads put their opinions in, then they come in with an order of conditions, and I don't know, can they just say, no, we don't agree with those? No, or yes, so they vote them in. But I did talk to Mr. Smith, too, and they always work with them on orders of condition. It's just how high do you want to push it, I guess, and what, how far you can push it.
Thank you, Councilor Sinowicz. Councilor Saslaw.
And I just want to touch upon that. When we look at the Sunday issue, because I know we're going to have homeowner woods, it's going to start on the springtime, I don't have a problem with the homeowner doing it. And the planning board is basically talking about the site plan, and they talk about heavy equipment and machinery. And the developer said, well, we don't do that on Sundays. But this is the fine line that we need to define is, is if the vinyl siding guy shows up on a Sunday. To me, the intent is for them to have peace and quiet on a Sunday, and that's why I think we're looking for a little bit more definitive line, because I'm concerned about work on a Sunday also. If the homeowner wants to seed, wants to mow their lawn, you know, repair a window sill, but as far as a vinyl siding contractor showing up on a Sunday, starting to bang away, that's the issue that, and we have two or three developments going on, so I concur with Counselor Turco. I'm looking for a little bit more guidance on this also.
Thank you, Counselor Saslaw. Councilor Sinowicz, we have the option of leaving some of this for the subcommittee where.
It's on my mind, so I would like to say it. Through you to Counselor Saslaw. And, look, we all like to think that the developer has the best interests of the city and the residents involved, so when he says, no heavy equipment on Sunday, not in writing anywhere, and then what happens? The heavy equipment shows up on Sunday and starts pounding away, and the neighbors complain, and oh, no, it's not written anywhere. So, that's where those order of conditions, no Sunday work. It's almost like you have to say stuff that's like apparent, you know, you can't drive your car without gas. But with these people in, you know, that famous four-letter word, cash, money, five-letter word, money, everything goes out the window when you're trying to make a buck. And that's what I'm seeing with some of these issues. It's all about the money, and the heck with everybody that surrounds us, so everybody else takes a beating while you make a buck. And those things have to be addressed. And I'm not trying to stop anybody from building the best they can, but not at every expense of the quality of life of everybody that lives around you. And so, we'll get into this in committee again, but I don't want to talk about this anymore.
Thank you, Councilor Sinowicz. So, we have that motion to refer to committee. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I just wanted to let the council know that the school committee approved a plan for construction. I guess it's a general plan for construction for the L.L. O'Donnell South Memorial Playground at the South PBD Elementary School. And I want to say thank you to Council President McGinn for being with me and attending some of the initial meetings for that playground. And as most of you know, L.L. O'Donnell was a nine-year-old that recently passed away due to brain cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Councilor Garabedian.
Well, I'm here, Mr. President.
Counselor Turco.
My apologies. Moves to receive under suspension of the rules, item 7A, and thank the mayor for his quick action on that.
Councilors, you heard the motion, suspension of the rules, to receive item 7A. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive under suspension of the rules, item 8A.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive under suspension of the rules, item 8B.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive under suspension of the rules, item 8C. Thank you.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Garabedian.
No motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Garabedian. Councilor Gould.
No motions, but, Tim, can you help clarify, what are our meetings going forward to the end of the year, or, Mr. President?
Yeah, so, we should look at this carefully, because one of those is a zoning request that will, as soon as we start that, that may set off a clock. So, I think it would be prudent, since we're running down for the end of the year here, to, we basically have one meeting in December.
Well, we have two meetings scheduled. We have a special meeting on December 1st for tax classification, and the last regular meeting scheduled is December 8th. And then we're, that's what we have.
Thank you very much.
Scheduled to the end of the year.
Right. So, but the December 1st meeting is tentative at this point, based on the volume we have